Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 25th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Tonight, blessed to have Pastor Robbie Baxter from the Christ Community Church leaving vacation, followed by firefighter Ian Figarora from Station 19, leaving in the presence of allegiance. So those who are willing and able, please stand.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. Would you pray with me? Gracious and merciful Father, we thank you for this day and for calling us together. We thank you that we can come before you by the merits of Christ. We ask that as we gather tonight, we would glorify you in the way that we behave and act and in all that we do, that it would be truly and from the heart, a service to one another and glorifying to you. We ask for this assembled Board of Commissioners, that you would give them a spirit of wisdom and discernment in everything that they do, that they would truly serve our community in the way that they pursue wholesomeness and justice for one another and for us as a community. And may we, in our own hearts, give thankfulness to you for them and the labor that they do for our community. And may the result of it all be that we would be united to one another, in true service to one another, in love for one another, rather than in division. We ask more and more, Lord, that we would glorify you in the way that we think and act, and that we would learn more each day, to love the things that you command, to desire what you promise, and fix our eyes and hearts in heaven where true joys may be found. We ask this all in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have a number of presentations tonight, and I'll start with Commissioner Burrow. Would you like us to join in? The first one will be the East Cobb Alliance Club, so come on down.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor tonight of presenting the East Cobb Lions Club with the proclamation for 60 years of service. Let's give them a round of applause while they're coming up. Turn around. I've adopted this group. Growing up, my dad was a Lion in North Carolina, and one of my fondest memories was the father-daughter dance every year. I don't think y'all do that anymore, do you? No. Oh. So I'm gonna read the proclamation and then pass it around for y'all to introduce yourselves and give us a little history of your club. Whereas the East Cobb Lions Club received its charter July 14th, 1958, from the Lions Club International, to serve the eastern portions of Cobb County. They have conducted fundraisers of every kind and have worked tirelessly to benefit the citizens of East Cobb and Cobb County. And whereas their efforts over the past 60 years helped lead the expansion of the Cobb County Library System, and they have been vigilant in providing eye exams and glasses for countless children and adults. They have also provided camping and life skills experience for visually impaired young people and adults at the Georgia Lions Camp in Waycross. Other works included provision of comprehensive vision services, including mobile vision clinics and surgery through the Georgia Lions Lighthouse in Shambly. Rehabilitative services for the newly blind at Vision Rehab Services in Smyrna, and provided recorded textbooks for visually impaired students, which are produced in Athens at Learning Alley. And whereas the East Cobb Lions work is not limited to services in Georgia, for they have provided training and dog guides which restore independence and mobility through leader dogs for the blind in Rochester Hills, Michigan, and southeastern guide dogs in Palmetto, Florida. As part of their greater mission, have supported Lions Club's International Foundation, which provides disaster relief both within our state and internationally, and works to eradicate measles and preventable causes of blindness through the world. And whereas they currently provide vision screenings in the Cobb County School System for all first and fourth grade students, as well as other grade levels. For many years, they have provided free vision screening at the North Georgia Fair and at various health fairs, collected and recycled used eyewear to be distributed abroad to needy people, and collected used cell phones and hearing aids, which are sold to RACE Funds to support the largest program in Georgia, providing hearing aids to the needy. Members of the club have proudly distributed American flags along the route of the Marietta Fourth of July Independence Day Parade. They have prepared and delivered meals on wheels on Christmas Day for Cobb Senior Services for more than 35 years. They also support East Cobb Park, Marietta Cobb Museum of Art, and have supported the East Marietta Little League for 60 years, and are the longest-running continuous sponsor of that organization. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the commitment and dedication of the East Cobb Lions Club, and congratulate the club on the celebration of their 60th anniversary. We commend you and your members for your dedication to serve others and make our community a better place in which to work and live. This is the 25th day of September 2018. Congratulations. Also, this year, the East Cobb Lions Club lost a very integral member of their organization, Willie Diggs, and we'd like to honor his memory tonight and dedicate this proclamation for him.
Okay, there's so many of us, so I don't want to spend too much time, other than to say, "Thank you for doing this. We really appreciate this." And of course, to me, this is like a great big Sunday School class, because we might be very small in numbers, but boy, we all work really hard, and we love everything that we do. Our motto at Lions is "We Serve," and this is exactly what we do in the community. Last year, we had over 10,000 eye screenings that we did for schoolchildren, and this year, we anticipate having that number go up above 14,000. And a lot of people in this group right here are almost at a school every single day doing those eye screenings, so.
And Cecil here is a World War II veteran. Okay, y'all want to get in for a picture? Does anybody else want to say anything? Yeah, will the board join me? Thank you, Lions. Now, I'd like to ask Justice Harris Hines and his family to please come up. We have the distinct honor tonight of recognizing and honoring our Supreme Court Justice Harris Hines, who lauds from Cobb County, and we're very proud of him and all his major accomplishments. He's a true bulldog through and through. So I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna ask you to say a few words. Whereas Harris Hines was appointed to the Supreme Court of Georgia on July 26, 1995, by Governor Zell Miller to succeed Willis B. Hunt Jr., former Chief Justice. He was sworn in as Chief Justice on January 6, 2017, by Governor Nathan Deal. Prior to his appointment to the Supreme Court, Chief Justice Hines served as a Superior Court Judge and a State Court Judge in the Cobb County Judicial Circuit. Whereas, an Atlanta native, Chief Justice Hines graduated from Henry Grady High School in 1961. He graduated from Emory University in 1965, and received his Juris Doctor degree from Emory University School of Law in 1968. In 2017, he was made a member of Emory Law 100, which is for Emory graduates who have made extraordinary contributions. He clerked for Judge E.A. Wright, Senior Judge of the Civil Court of Fulton County, and then joined the firm of Edward Spentley Altria and Parker of Marietta as an associate, and later became a partner. Chief Justice Hines was appointed to the State Court of Cobb County by Governor Jimmy Carter, and was later elected to the Superior Court of the Cobb Judicial Circuit. Whereas Chief Justice Hines was admitted to the State Bar of Georgia in 1968, he is also a member of the American Bar Association and the Cobb Judicial Circuit Bar Association. He is President of the Old War Horse Lawyers Club, an emeritus master of the Joseph Henry Lumpkin Inn of Court, which is associated with the University of Georgia School of Law, a member of the Board of Visitors of the University of Georgia School of Law, and a Fellow of the Lawyers Foundation of Georgia. He is a graduate of the National Judicial College. Whereas Chief Justice, as Chief Justice, he chaired the Judicial Council, which is the policymaking body for Georgia's judicial branch, and is made up of all classes of courts. Prior to becoming Chief Justice, he served 16 years as Chair of the Supreme Court's Justice for Children Committee. He was the Court's Liaison to the General Assembly, the Chief Justice's Commission on Professionalism, and the Office of Bar Admissions. That's a lot. He was appointed in 2015 as a member of the Judicial District Attorney and Circuit Public Defender Compensation Commission. Whereas Chief Justice Hines is a former trustee of the Kennesaw State University Foundation, a member and past distinguished president of the Kiwanis Club of Marianna, and a past distinguished Lieutenant Governor of the Georgia District of Kiwanis International. He served on the inaugural Board of Directors of the Cobb Marietta Girls Club, and is past President of the Cobb County YMCA. He has participated in the Leadership Georgia and Leadership Atlanta programs, and was selected as Cobb's Most Admired Community Leader in 1993. In 2016, he was named Cobb Citizen of the Year by the Cobb Chamber. He received the Big Voice for Children Award from Voices for Children's, Georgia's Children, in 2015, and in 2016 and 17, Georgia Trend Magazine named him as one of the most 100 Most Fluential Georgians. Whereas, born in 1943, Chief Justice Hines is the son of James Ruben Hines, a native of Leslie, Georgia, and Edith Hawkins Hines, a native of Gray, Georgia. Chief Justice Hines is married to the former Helen Holmes Hill of Talladega, Alabama, and they reside in Marietta, and have two children and four grandchildren, some of which are here tonight. Chief Justice Hines is an elder in the First Presbyterian Church of Marietta, and has served as Clerk of Session, and he is an Eagle Scout. And now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, hereby thank you for all of your years of service to our community and the state of Georgia, and we wish you well in your retirement.
Well, I'll certainly be brief at this time. I think if your hair gets white enough and your eyes get dim enough, it'll just kind of come to you. But Chairman Boyes, Commissioner Cupid, Commissioner Weatherford, my own Commissioner, Ms. Burrell, and Commissioner Odd, I want you to humble me by this resolution, and I hope in some small measure, I'm deserving of it. I have been at the practice of law as an attorney or as a judge now for 50 years. I was a law clerk for a year, and then I was fortunate enough to have an opportunity, maybe to go several places. I chose Cobb County. I came out here and began practicing law in 1969. We moved here in 1971. When I came here, Mr. Ernest Barrett was the Chairman of the Commission, and who had been on the Commission was then my next-door neighbor, his widow's my next-door neighbor now, Mr. Al Burris, who then was Majority Leader of the Georgia House. I can tell you, having been in government for many, many years, we had visionary leaders then, and we have visionary leaders now. I think Cobb County's government is the best there can be. We had, at one time, four members of the Supreme Court, who actually had really Cobb County ties. Our present Chief Justice is Harold Melton, who worked for me when I was on the Superior Court bench here, and he went to Wheeler High School. Of course, I've lived here a long time, and two of our other justices are also from Cobb County and live here. And they are Keith Blackwell, who lives in East Cobb, and also Nels Peterson. So we have three members now in the Supreme Court out of nine. When we had four, I said, "If we could have picked up one more, we'd have had a majority." And so that was really a neat thing. But I do say this, I bragged on Cobb County, always have, to the extent that I think it embarrassed some of my colleagues, and they called it the Sovereign State of Cobb. And I told them, "If everybody could be as good as Cobb County's government, the Sovereign State of Cobb, we would all be in good shape." So let me just tell you this, ladies and gentlemen, we do have good government, and I'm grateful for it, for each of your service. I know it's difficult. We have good people, we have good citizens, we have wonderful leaders. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is his lovely wife, Helen. His grandson's Clay and Hines, and Mary Margaret, his daughter. Judge Grubbs, would you like to come up for the picture, please? You should have been up here to... We have our Senior Judge Grubbs with us tonight, too.
Can I get the young Marines up here? And where's your leader? Isn't there an adult here somewhere? I know there was a mentor here somewhere. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use, and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and termination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work and works of Enrique Quique Camarena, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. October 23rd through 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Cobb County, and urge all citizens to join us in this special observance. So it is with a great deal of pleasure and pride that I present this proclamation to someone in here who is going to be the next Chairman of Cobb County. So with that, Ms. Thomas, I'll let you introduce your team here, and I want you to accept this proclamation on behalf of the board.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll let them introduce themselves. Is that okay? My name is Rebecca Thomas, and I am a volunteer with the Young Marines. We do have, this is only less than half of our unit. You remember, our age is eight through 18, and it is a school night, so not everybody can make it. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. Is that okay?
My name is Young Marine Sergeant Kronk, and I'm in charge here today.
My name is Young Marine Lance Cornpool-Thomas, and I'm the next senior ranking in Young Marines.
My name's Private Hudson Bashkin, and after him.
My name is Young Marine Private Espinola, and I don't really know what to say.
All right, so let's get the picture here with everybody. Thank you. It's my honor to do a special presentation tonight. I think we'll make all of us very proud to be Cobb County residents. Very special presentation. And in order to do that, I'd like to call my fellow Board of Commissioners to come on down. And also, I'd like to have Andy Higgins and Sarah Herr with the Cobb Police Explorers join us, as well as Chief Register. We're here to recognize one of our police explorers from Cobb County Police Units, Mario Alexander. If he could come down, please. Well, he's already here. Come over here, Mario. Over here, Corporal. Understand you're a junior at Campbell High School?
Yes, sir.
Good. I think we have Mr. Joshua Ford, Assistant Principal, here tonight, do we not? Could he come forward, please? Come on. Have you got any parents here or anything? Anybody wants to? Lieutenant Leo's nobody's parent, so I don't think... Anybody else would like to come down while I read this? Lieutenant Leo, come on. Oh. All right, it's my honor to read this proclamation, and I'd like you to listen to it very intently, because it's quite an amazing story. Seventeen-year-old Cobb County Police Explorer Corporal Mario Alexander was instrumental in saving the lives of his coworkers on September 9, 2018. Corporal Alexander was working in a local retail store when he saw two fellow employees that had been stabbed and cut by a robber. And he rushed to their assistance. One of the victims was bleeding profusely from a stab to the arm, so Corporal Alexander used his work shirt to make a tourniquet and slow the flow of blood from the deep wound. And whereas he also helped the second victim by applying gauze and direct pressure to a neck wound, he continued to monitor and help both coworkers until medical professionals and police arrived. He continued to assist once first responders were on the scene. And whereas Corporal Alexander credits his excellent training he received in the Cobb County Police Explorer Program for preparing him to handle this emergency in an extremely tense situation, he was able to remain calm and quickly apply the knowledge he'd learned about slowing massive bleeding even though he did not have a proper field tourniquet. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Corporal Mario Alexander for his bravery and heroism. His quick thinking and action, coupled with knowledge he received in the Cobb County Police Explorer Program, exemplify his commitment and dedication to public safety. 25th day of September, 2018. Wow. I believe our future is bright with young men and women like this. So congratulations. Officer Higgins, would you like to say a few words, sir? I know he's been on your tutelage as well.
I was not surprised when I read the information that Target sent me, that it was Mario that stepped in. He always puts others before self, and that's what we teach him in Explorers, is others before self. And he stepped in and did exactly what he was trained to do. Officer Herr over here is my assistant. She had just been teaching them how to properly put on a tourniquet, and apparently, he was paying attention. So when the others stood around and just watched, Mario got in there and took action. And I'm very proud of him, very proud of our program and the kids that we have in that program. They're outstanding, and I look forward, in a few years, to have Mario wearing this uniform as a Cobb County Police Officer. Thank you.
And as you may or may not know, our Police Explorer Program is second to none. We've won state championship for, what? Ten times. Right. We ought to keep it going. I mean, quite a record, so they have a very great professional program to develop, men and women like this. So let's give them another round of applause and... You know, after that kind of recognition, I'm not sure we should go on. Anyway, that's... We have, on a regular basis, just commended the outstanding young men and women we have in this county. And both Mario and his instructors, mentors, just typify the police department that we have in this county, and actually, the public safety program we have here, and why we believe they're the best. and why we believe they're the best in the state of Georgia, dot America. We're very proud of what they've achieved tonight, and certainly feel honored to be in the presence of Mario tonight. Okay, going on to some mundane business now called public hearings. We have four of them, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the first one is to conduct the first public hearing to solicit comments and input on the proposed amendments to Chapters 2, 50, 54, 58, 122, 134 of the Cobb County Code. Tonight will be the first hearing, and the next hearing will be next month on October 23rd, another evening meeting. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to you, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As point of reference, these are all codes that have been, are being brought forward by consideration. These codes were either brought forward by staff, or they are a recommendation of the Board for the county to consider these recommendations. These are just recommendations, and certainly, the Board of Commissioners has the ultimate policymaking authority and will make the decision on which and how, in what form any of these codes, if they are approved, would occur. Chairman is correct, because there is a second public hearing at the second meeting in October, which is on October the 23rd at 7:00 in this room. And there will be another version of this that will be released after this particular hearing, based upon comments that were received from the Board of Commissioners. So this particular code section covers Chapters 2, 50, 54, 58, 122, and 134. That's Administration, Environment, Fire Prevention and Protection, Floods, Utilities, and Zoning. I will go through these in order for staff to, for the Board to understand what is in this particular code sections. The first section is under Administration or Economic Development. This is a section where we are recommending that a new language be added to the purpose statement that details the, what it takes in order to get a film production occurring in Cobb County, from the first point of contact with the state when they, when they let, bring a lead to us, all the way through permitting and filming and having our staff on-site in order to ensure public safety during, during the film process. So this just kind of lays out the entire process and who is involved in the overall process. Chapter 50, which is the Environment, under 50-52, this deals with the Chattahoochee River Corridor Tributary Area. This is an area covered by a state law called the Metropolitan Rivers Protection Act, which does not allow for land disturbance activity within 2,000 feet of the Chattahoochee River unless it goes through a regional review process. As part of that, at certain times, we do have individuals or developers who might go in and remove trees in this protected buffer area. And what this particular code section would do would provide staff with a little bit more of ability to handle those issues when the buffers are violated. This would require recompense, and it would also allow for an immediate stop work order, and for the contractor that did so would allow us to not provide any additional permits to them until the recompense is complete. Chapter 54, 54 dot 2, under Fire Prevention and Protection, this is one of the requests from the Fire Marshal's Office that deals with operational permits for special events. This is just really trying to create a nexus between the other codes and standards contained that deal with special events and kind of bringing them together in a whole. I anticipate from our conversations with the Fire Department and Public Safety that we'll, there will be a larger effort for code changes coming forward in 2019 to really kind of expand on this a little bit and develop a special event section of the code, so all of it can be in one place. But this is the start of that, by starting to bring it together. 58-26 deals with definitions in the Flood Section of the ordinance. Under the Definition Section, this is really just a minor amendment to the definition of lowest floor, so it is in, in, it comports with federal standards. In 58-32, there is some language that is being stricken from lands which this article applies to. There were some caveats that those particular sections are being removed, the caveats, so that would then apply to all lands within Cobb County where flood conditions exist or potential flood conditions exist. Under 58-70, this is under the provisions for flood hazard reduction. This is a number of sections that deal with different types of structures that are in floodplain areas and the type of requirements that are already detailed in code of what would be required for any rehabilitation or reconstruction of these particular structures. I think I just went through a couple of slides, so I'm gonna catch us up here. Under Chapter 122, this is Utilities. This is 122-41, under the Violations Section. This is just removing some language recommended by the Water Department as it relates to removing some caveats that were in the code, so that way, just all of it shall be enforced as follows without the caveats. 134, the Zoning Section. The first alteration is regarding with eating and drinking establishments, the definitions of eating and drinking establishments. This would incorporate brew pubs into that definition. Brew pubs are areas where you both manufacture and you have a restaurant where you sell, maybe where you manufacture beer, and you are also able to sell it at the restaurant. And this is just making sure that it's clear that that process, particularly with the restaurant, would let it fall under the eating and drinking establishment definition, and this is in compliance with the Georgia Department of Revenue Codes and Requirements for such activities. Under 134, 206 is the RM12 Residential Multi-Family District Code. In this particular section, staff at the request of the Board has brought forward some changes that deal with allowing detached and attached, single-family-owned residential structures within a multifamily designation. That's what the purpose of this particular code section is here. Staff has made some recommendations to the Board to kind of go along with that, that certainly the Board may consider. The recommendations from staff are as follows. One is that we incorporate a workforce development component into it so that we can ensure that we have housing for all people in Cobb County. We used the HUD standards for workforce housing, which is 80% to 120% of area median income. And if they did incorporate a workforce housing component, they would be a small density bonus, which would be authorized as part of that. We have also recommended that, that there be a 20-foot perimeter buffer setback along other residentially zoned properties in order to protect neighbors, a 15-foot setback along public roadways, which can be reduced down to zero feet if they provide rear-entry garages. And this would be off of the public right-of-way where the setback would be, so it would still incorporate all of the normal public facilities that you would have in public right-of-way, like sidewalks and curb cuts and things of that nature. A minimum setback of five feet between buildings, and if this were to occur, and it gets any less than five feet, then there would need to be a fire separation requirements as required in the International Building Code. If they did do less than 10 feet between buildings, then staff recommend that all utility meters, boxes, HVAC, everything would be put to the back of the building, to the rear of the structure, so one, it's not towards the front of the structure along the roadway, and there is enough space to access and maintain those particular facilities. Under 134, 217 is the Planned Village Commercial. Staff is recommending that the minimum contiguous acres be reduced from 50 feet to 20 feet. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that you open the first public hearing on the code amendments, and I'll be happy to address any comments or questions from the Board.
Was that 50 feet or 50 acres?
Acres, sir. Did I say feet? I meant 50 acres.
It's gonna be a heck of a development at 50 feet.
It would be a very small, it would be more than, less than a micro home, sir.
Tiny house. All right, so the guidelines are, we can have an unlimited number of speakers, but three minutes, and I ask if you do come up to let us know who you are and where you live. So with that, I now declare this public hearing open on the dislicit comments on the proposed amendments to the County Code as just read. Would anybody like to come forth and make a, make any statements? Okay?
My name is Jill Flam. I'm representing East Cobb Civic Association in presenting our comments on the proposed code amendments. First off, Section 134-206, the Workforce Housing. ECCA believes you might as well change RM12 to RM14, as developers can now get a density allowed only in a rack in HDR. Who wouldn't want additional density for the money? For landowners, they can ask more money for the land with a higher density. We also have additional concerns. How is the county going to enforce that 15% of the units will be sold to the targeted households? Is it discriminatory to only allow some units to be sold to a certain group of people? What is the long-term benefit to Cobb County when the classification of workforce housing disappears after the next sale, which, talking with real estate agents, could occur early after five years? The density will remain, and the classification disappears from the development. What if a developer requests the removal of the 15% rule, claiming they can't find people to sell the designated homes to? The homes are already built at the higher density with the smaller buffers. Damage regard to density is already done to the area, and simply tearing down the houses doesn't remedy the situation. We also are concerned that we are now giving up green space to get density. If located up against a more restrictive zoning, the backyards will be all landscape buffer per this amendment. No room for anything else, including AC units. Previous zonings have shown that people cut the buffers down in order to have a backyard, eliminating the screening from the adjoining subdivisions. This causes code enforcement violations, variance requests, and legal expenses. If there is no minimum lot size, meeting the impervious surface limitation of 45% may prove difficult. Once again, there will be an increase in code enforcement activity and variance requests. Finally, what about parking and sidewalks? No mention is made about one or two-car garages or length of the driveways, where the visitor's going to park. No parking on streets with the homes as close together. And what happens when people convert their garages to living space and need to park all their cars outside? If the front setback requirement is zero due to rear-entry garages, where will the sidewalks go? Streetlights? ECCA recommends denial of this code amendment as is currently written. With regard to Section 134-217, changing the requirement for PVC from 50 acres to 20 acres, ECCA recommends examining all the uses that are currently allowed in PVC. With a reduction of 60% in the amount of land required, some of the uses, such as hotels, may need to be limited to larger tracks. Thank you very much.
Jill?
Yes, Jill.
You can come on up, Carol. Commissioner, she might have some questions of you, Commissioner Jill.
Jill, I was just gonna ask if you can send that to us if you haven't already. You did? Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay, I was gonna see if you sent that to us via email.
I did at 4:00 this afternoon, and I apologize for the late.
No problem. I appreciate the points made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Carol.
Good evening, Carol Brown, Canton Road Neighbors, off Canton Highway in District 3. Regarding the changes to Section 134, 206, RM12 Residential Multi-Family, we support the addition of single-family attached and detached homes. I assume these are probably going to be townhomes at a maximum density of 12 units per acre. I understand that these, of course, are only going to be allowed in rack and in HDR, high-density residential areas and regional activity centers. These are, these are urban dwellings. I don't think any neighborhoods really have to worry that these are going to spring up next to their single-family subdivision. Also particularly support the addition of a workforce housing incentive, shown in Use Limitations, Section 12 and B. However, I believe that the floor ought to be lowered from 100%, from a density bonus, setting aside 15% for households earning not more than 100% of area median income. Lower that floor to 80% of households earning not more than 80% of area median income. And I have some very recent numbers. The current area median income, 100% of that is $71,820 for a household of four people, and 80% of area median income for a four-person household is $59,850. There's a critical shortage of affordable, not affordable, but of workforce housing in Cobb, and affordable as well. But these are, these are government guidelines, the definitions of what is workforce housing. As Dana mentioned previously, would be from 80 to 100% of AMI. I believe that this is really the way to go. This is, this is a method used in other municipalities to try to get set-asides of workforce housing, and we would ask for your favorable consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, you still have 30 seconds.
I would like to respond to ECCA's comment, and they do have some good observations about this, but I believe I saw that the minimum square footage would be 950 square feet. I believe that would be a limiting factor going forward in the resale of these for increased prices. I mean, it's a fairly small dwelling unit, and probably going to be three-floor walk-up. So that's my comment. That's sort of a rebuttal, but it seems like a good, a good limiting factor would be the square footage. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a comment? Would anybody else like to make a comment on this, on these proposed changes to the code amendment, to the code, County Code? Seeing none, I now close this public hearing closed, and again, we'll be back next month for the second public hearing on October 23rd. Commissioner Otte.
Hey, Dana, just, I don't know why it jumped out at me this time, but while you're going through 58-26, you know the issues we've been having with McMansions? And we have a couple different definitions of lowest floor. And it seems to me that, I thought I heard you say that the definition here in 58-26 is a federal guideline?
It is a federal guideline, and what it's basically adding to it is that in the basement consideration, lowest floor remains the lowest floor of the lowest enclosed area, including basements, cross-basin enclosures. So if those are our...
I would, no, I understand what it's adding here. My suggestion is that maybe we ought to be using that single definition in the rest of the codes relative to figuring out where the lowest floor is.
I will speak to the chief building official about it.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good catch. Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Weatherford, yes.
Can we clarify something, some of the comments, Mr. Johnson? As far as how this would be enforced, do you know, we have a precedent already with RSLs that have stipulations about each?
For the RSL Urban Rental Units, yes, there is a provision in there where they can, can do 80% and below AMI. That is written into the code.
Okay, and also HOA has had stipulations as far as different things. So it seems to me if we want to put this workforce housing development clause in there in the HOA, it could be a stipulation and can be enforceable.
It can be, and most likely what staff will do is if the Board approves a policy, stating that they wish to do that, then we'll work with the county attorney on some policies to implement that policy, to make sure that the Board's policy direction are adequately implemented by staff.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, second public hearing. To conduct a public hearing and approve the Chattahoochee Quarter Plan Certificate of Compliance for the Expansion of Existing Single Family Residential Building at 3336 Cochise Drive.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm just organizing myself here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a public hearing and approval of a Chattahoochee Quarter Certificate for 3336 Cochise Drive. By a bit of background information, the Georgia General Assembly in 1973 approved the Metropolitan Rivers Protection Act that enabled the creation of a 2,000-foot buffer off Chattahoochee River, which required that all land disturbance activities happening within proximity of the river would need to go through the Atlanta Regional Commission for review prior to issuing of a land disturbance... prior to issuing of a land disturbance permit. It also required the Board of Commissioners to have a public hearing and authorize that before it were to happen. In this case, we have 3336 Cochise Drive, which is Mr. Ross and Gina Overstreet down in the Vining's area. And they are seeking permission to expand their home and put a porch in their home. And it has gone through regional review and all seems to be in compliance with the state law. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask if you would please open up the public hearing, receive comments, and then staff would recommend approval of the issuance of this certificate, sir.
Okay, same guidelines, unlimited number of speakers, three minutes per speaker. Please identify yourself and where you live when you come to speak. So now I opened a public hearing to approve the Chattahoochee Quarter Plan Certificate of Compliance for the property of 3336 Cochise Drive. Would anybody like to come forth and comment on this application? Would anyone like to come forth and comment on this application? Seeing none, I now to close this public hearing closed, and Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee Quarter Certificate for the expansion of the existing single-family residence, residential building at 3336 Cochise Drive and Land Lot 975 of the 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, by Mr. Ross and Ms. Jenna Overstreet, subject to the rules and guidelines of the Metropolitan River Protection Act and all applicable Cobb County Development Standards and Regulations.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Now I am going to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution designating the Castile Nick's Volan House at 1763 Holly Springs Road as a historic property by placing it on the Cobb County Register of Historic Places. With that, I'll turn this over to you, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is with great pleasure that I am here on behalf of staff, as well as Historic Preservation Commission, making a recommendation to add a home, if the board approves it, to the local register of historic places. We don't get to do this very much, so when we have an opportunity to do it, it is really a wonderful occasion to highlight and expand upon the rich history that we have in Cobb County. In this case, we are talking about the Castile Nick's Volan House. This is located at 1763 Holly Springs Road. As a bit of background information, we have followed all rules and regulations of both the State Historic Preservation Act as well as our Local Historic Preservation Act that has brought us forward to this point. As far as applications, notices, and reviews by the state, our Historic Preservation Commission has made a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation of approval of adding this onto it. And the last thing in order to do is for the board to open a public hearing and approve this via resolution. What this means for the property owner, if the property owner does, if the board does agree to place in this on the local register, then any exterior change of appearance of the structure and landscape would need to go forward to the Historic Preservation Commission for approval for receipt of a certificate of appropriateness. Also, there is another benefit to having your property located on the local register. And that is, local registered properties are able to obtain Historic Preservation Tax Program through the Tax Assessor's Office for a period of 10 years. So there is a benefit to preserving history, and we hope to expand upon that in other areas of Cobb County. Here is a location map showing where this particular home is off of Holly Springs Road. And as a bit of background, this was one where the property owners actually came to us and made the request for their home to be placed on the local register. This home was built around 1920, and it's called a Tenement Farmhouse. It is an example of a particular type of house with two rooms and a chimney in between them. It was built by G.B. Castile when Mr. Castile purchased almost 118 acres around 1905. At that time, Mr. Castile built a farmhouse along with this tenant farmhouse. And this is an excellent example of this representation of our agricultural heritage in East Cobb. Here are some pictures showing the beautiful home that the Volans have purchased and are maintaining. Here's showing the north-facing facade, the south-facing facade, and some other angles of their home. So with that, we are very excited to bring this forward. The Volans, Mr. Curtis and Emily Volan are here to support their request for acceptance onto the local register. And we would ask you to please open the public hearing and consider adoption of this particular item.
Okay, again, unlimited number of speakers, three minutes each. Please identify yourself and where you live if you chose to speak. And with that, I'll now open up a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution designating the Castile Nick's Volan House as historic property by placing it on the Cobb County Register of Historic Places. Would anybody like to speak to this issue? Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I now call it, declare this public hearing closed, and I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Burrow.
This is very rare to have a historic home on Holly Springs in this area. So it's beautiful, and I am happy to make a motion to approve the Castile Nick's Volan House at 1763 Holly Springs Road. Be adopted, that we adopt a resolution designating this as a historic property and placing it on the Cobb County Register of Historic Places.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The last of our public hearings today is a twofer today where we have another historic property. This one came about from a slightly different method. To the credit to Ms. Mandy Elliott, who has been faithfully trying to promote historic preservation throughout Cobb County for the last 15 years, as well as Abby Parks, who is the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. They have actually recently been sending letters to property owners asking them if they wish to be considered for the local register. And this is one family who responded to that and said, yes, thank you for the letter. We would love to join the local register. So this is a request from Mr. Larry and Sherry Corey for the Brown Loudermilk Corey House. I am not going to go through all of the same material that I have already gone through because I think you understand the process for bringing this forward. However, the Historic Preservation Commission did recommend approval of this on a unanimous vote this last month. And again, we're asking the board to please open a public hearing and consider it also. I have already gone through what the requirements and benefits are as it relates to having your property listed on the historic register, so I will not repeat myself again on that. But here is where this particular home is located. It is kinda at the nexus where Daniel Street, Cooper Lake Road, and Atlanta Road come together right there, kinda in between Smyrna and Vining's area. This is a wonderful area of Cobb County. This particular one, again, was nominated by the property owners. This house was built in around 1900, and it sits on about an acre. It's an example of our Queen Anne-style cottage, which has six other homes throughout Cobb County that are similar in style to this. This particular home was owned by Alfred Manor and the Manor's son-in-law, Wiley Brown. Manor and Brown's families were very prominent, and they were helped contribute and create the Fitzlou Lee School, which is, I cannot say that word for the life of me. But Mandy will correct me as soon as I'm done, I'm sure. But that is a prominent school that is just down the road from here. This was later purchased by Alice Loudermilk in 1919, and the current owners purchased this resident and are rehabilitating it since 2006. Here is the beautiful home that they have refurbished. You can see it, and if you drive down Atlanta Road, you can see it from there. It's a beautiful piece of property. They've done an amazing job in restoring it, and we're thankful for both families for their efforts in preserving history in Cobb County. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to please open a public hearing and then ask you to please consider adding this, approving the resolution and adding this to the local register. Thank you, sir.
And anyone, we have unlimited number of speakers, three minutes each. And if you do care to comment, please let us know who you are and where you live. So with that, I now open up a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution designating the Brown Loudermilk Corey House to be placed on the Cobb County Register of Historic Places. Would anyone like to make a comment on this application? Would anyone like to comment on this application? Seeing none, now I declare this public hearing closed, and I turn the floor over to Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I know you all are sitting in the back there going, if this is so rare, how come we had two in one night? Well, I think it's testament to Mandy and the Historic Preservation Commission. We have heard a lot of them recently. I mean, in the 10 years I've been up here, I think I've heard more in the last six months. But, you know, this just is a tremendous job that they do in protecting and preserving the historic places around the county. So make a motion to approve adding this to the Register of Historic Places.
Second.
Do I have a second? Do we have a second discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. And before we do public comment, I just want to read a couple admin notices here. It may influence those who come up to make comments tonight. Consent item number 12 has been withdrawn, and that consent item was to authorize the application, acceptance, and appropriation of grant funds from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council under the Victims of Crime Act Grant Program supported juvenile court and court-appointed special advocate program. That has been withdrawn for consideration later. We've also moved consent item number nine to the regular agenda, and that item was to appoint a county manager, the county representative, to be the primary point of contact for communication on matters related to the Atlanta Braves and SunTrust Park. So that will go to regular now tonight. And then in regular item number 35, we've had a small revision that the motion will be to revise, to accept, rather than adopt the county-wide master plan, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. It's regular.
Since I was the one that requested to remove the one from consent to regular, but the changes have been made that I was looking for.
Okay.
I'm fine with it staying on.
Oh, you want to leave it there?
Yes.
Okay, so do we gotta have a motion to bring it back? Or we just leave it there? Just leave it there? Number nine. Okay, so the only two changes are consent item number 12 has been withdrawn and regular item number 35, a small change to one, the verb to read "accept" vice "adopt." Okay, with that, public hearing and public comment, sorry.
You have two speakers. The first is Cynthia Patterson.
Okay, and remember, five minutes, and just let us know who you are and where you live. So come on up, Cynthia, we're glad to have you back.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Patterson, I live in District Two. Thank you for purchasing a dozen properties with Park Bond 2008 Funds. Your legacy of protecting green space makes Cobb a desirable place to live. Families and businesses relocate where the quality of life is good. Access to parks and recreation create a sense of identity and community pride. Now, what will we do with these precious 300 acres? Every park should have a plan. In late August, a park and recs proposal to invest $90,000 to begin master planning for the 300 acres was pulled, and the Board of Commissioners did not vote on funding the proposal. According to the Marietta Daily Journal, quote, "The plans would be used to guide development if and when funds become available, though the county has not yet budgeted funds to develop the land," end quote. Several county parks have Friends of Groups. The county can encourage organizing adopt-a-park groups to advocate for the new green space. Citizen listening meetings will draw ideas and dreams from the people who will most benefit from our newly protected land. Professional planners turn our dreams, hopes, and ideas into well-designed, attractive green space and parks. Long-term planning takes time. We should start now to plan how communities and the county want to use the green space. Preserve the green space as passive parks, protecting habitat and solitude. Build hiking or multi-use trails so families and groups can socialize and connect with nature. Ball fields to practice team skills and burn off youthful energy. Picnic areas, dog parks, horseback riding trails, community gardens, fishing ponds. Now is the time for every park to have a plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Delancy.
Good evening, my name is Monica Delancy, I reside in the Riverside Community. First of all, I would have to, I would like to thank Mr. William Tinks. I left him off last time, but he helped out with getting the generator for the national event. So he's here tonight, I want to make sure I recognize him and thank him officially for helping us out with that. I want to remind you that September is National Renters Month, and today is National Voter Registration Day. If a person wants to be able to qualify to rent an apartment, they would have to make at least $17 an hour to be able to afford an apartment here in Cobb County. The reality is that most of your companies, your warehouses with entry-level jobs, they're paying their workers $10 an hour. So we would have to question that and ask, where do they think these people are supposed to live if they're making less than $10 an hour? Are they supposed to live four or five people in a household to be able to make rent? And that's a person, a single person. But then you add on the challenges of a parent, a single parent that's making less than $36,000 a year. And the challenge that would be, and I'm using that number, $36,000, because that is for family of three to be able to qualify for free or reduce lunch at a school, they have to make less than $36,000 a year. So I've been using that as a point of reference. So just imagine the challenges that family is having in order to be able to provide safe and decent place to live here in Cobb County. Sometimes those families find themselves renting places that's not up to the code. Or they're having to decide to stay close to their job, to their low-paying job, so they don't have to drive an hour to get back and forth to work. So I made this request to encourage those companies that are relocating to close to I-20 and I-285 because of the entry level to the interstate. We encourage those companies to pay livable wages for those workers. Also, we encourage corporate landlords to keep up their properties and to encourage tenant-friendly resident associations. And we find a way for homeownership to make it attainable goal for everyone, regardless of the income. Thank you.
Hey, Monica, do me a favor, call Michael Murphy. While we were starting to do our homework on workforce housing, he found a provision where for renters, that might be of some help to which point you were addressing. So give him a call, would you?
Sure, Will, thank you.
You bet. Okay. That's the last of the public speakers, right, Deborah? Okay, so now we're going to consent agenda and make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. And whatever Commissioner Otte says, right? And authorize the Commissioners. And authorize the Commissioner, the chairman, to sign all necessary documents to. Okay, all right. She can mind meld with me here, she's a Vulcan like I am. Anyway, a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay, let's go on to the regular agenda now. Okay, let's go on to the regular agenda now. Okay. What I'd like you to do first, though, before we do the regular agenda, could you go ahead and scroll through the consent agenda? Let's just take a couple of minutes to have the audience take a look at the items on the consent agenda, okay? Thank you. Now, the regular agenda, and the first one, Dr. McMorris will lead us through the discussion on the proposal to fund local nonprofits.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I stand before you this evening to ask that you authorize the FY19 allocation of funds to nonprofit organizations serving residents here in Cobb County. By way of background, for many years, Cobb County has partnered with the Collaborative to develop the grant application, its procedures and processes, and to manage the review process, which is approved by the Collaborative's Board of Directors. On December 12, 2017, the BOC adopted four priorities which grantees were to comply for funding consideration. Those priorities are as follows: homelessness, family stability and poverty, ex-offender reentry/workforce development, and health and wellness. The application process was advertised and informational workshops held to thoroughly review the application submission process and the new key requirements as recommended by the Board of Commissioners. Funding recommendations have been reviewed by the Collaborative's Board of Directors and presented to the Board of Commissioners as well as the county manager. For FY19 funding, the Collaborative received 27 applications totaling $1.8 million in requests. Of the 27 applications, five were deemed ineligible. There were nine new grantees and 13 current grantees with requests totaling $1.5 million. After a very competitive evaluation process, the Collaborative is now recommending funding of $850,000 for 15 nonprofit organizations plus the Collaborative. The breakdown that met the metrics are as follows: 27% of the funding would focus on homelessness in the county, 39% on family stability and poverty, 32% on health and wellness, and 2% on ex-offender reentry/workforce development. The specific nonprofit grant awards are included in your attachment. As attachment A, funding is available in the county's FY19 general fund budget, which was adopted by the Board on the 25th of July. So, Chairman, Commissioners, I ask that the Board of Commissioners authorize FY19, excuse me, FY2019 allocation of funds in the approved amount of $850,000 to local nonprofit organizations, authorize the corresponding FY2019 budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McMorris.
You're welcome.
So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go and make a motion, and then have it seconded, and then we're going to have the discussion on this, and then we'll call the vote, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, with that, make a motion that the Board of Commissioners authorize fiscal year 2019 allocation of funds in the approved amount of $850,000 to local nonprofit organizations and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, so, I expect, we have lots of, we've had lots of discussion about this over the last six weeks, and does anybody like to comment on this one, other than me? Commissioner Weatherford?
Ms. McMorris, this was, this is budgeted in the FY19 budget that was passed. We're just now approving the allocation of the funds by this group, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And my understanding is they have a very stringent process that's been well-proven over the years that go through. We had a presentation to that regard, so I have no issues with the way that process is. And majority of the organizations here provide needed services to the county and have so for many, many years. So, I think it's well-spent funds that keeps us in the county from having to provide these services to others on our behalf or unnecessary burden on the public services if these services weren't provided. So, I fully support this.
Thank you. Obviously, I've had a lot of difficulty with this one, and I finally realized what the issue was for me, was that obviously I support this initiative because by virtue of some of the things that I've been doing since I came into office, I've visited many of these nonprofits, or I've seen the impact of their work. And as I, as quoted in the paper, that this is a blanket that we use to cover some of our needs here in the county. And if we don't approve it, well, just the blanket will still be there, just have some holes in it. But I think, I'd just like to sort of do a brief chronology of how we got to where we are. Last year, when I came on, I heard a lot of comments from the public that there was a perception that we were simply giving money to people. And I thought that those comments carried a lot of weight, that there was nothing in place that we provided guidance to the Collaborative, at that time, the Community Impact Funds, as to what it is that we were looking from them so they could have, they could submit a proposal to us, that we'd have a connectivity in the process. So, I asked Michael Murphy, our Board's Special Assistant for Special Projects, to start to put together, you know, a draft policies for this. And we had a very vigorous debate last fall, and we ended up with these four categories that Dr. McMorris has talked about, and we approved them five to zero. I think the question I should have asked, though, was not only should we have criteria for these nonprofits in order to us to make sure we have a connectivity between using taxpayers' money and Board allocating funds, but what I should have probably asked at the time was, what is the Board's, you know, true intent on the future of these kind of funding? But even though I didn't ask it this year, it came out during a discussion, even though I didn't ask it last year, it came out during the discussion this year. So, I get the intent. What I'm hearing is that there's a great deal of reluctance to continue to support these programs in the current way that they're structured, not just among the Board, but also by, among members of the community who I truly value their word. These are, these are members of the community who have vested interests in continuing to have a county that tries to find a way to address what I call the least and the lost. So, I've taken all these into consideration, and I think that perhaps the best way forward is that by the virtue of the fact that we passed the new guidelines last November, and even though there wasn't any kind of a stipulation placed on at that time, perhaps what we should have done, and any failure in the part of not doing is mine and mine alone, is that we should have said, we need to start finding a way to relook at this and perhaps start to withdraw from this kind of support or change the nature of the support. But because we didn't do that, and again, we didn't do it because I didn't ask the right question, here we are again, like we were last year, having a very informed discussion about a very important program, but nonetheless, the ultimate criteria is, is this the best use of the taxpayers' money? And that is a question that we should all be asking up here at the Board. And even though I, I'm a big advocate of this, I have to also take great pride in the fact that we are where we are today in this discussion because the Board has had a very open and vigorous discussion about this very issue. And so, even though, you know, I would obviously be a big proponent of it, I have to respect how all the Board members came to where they are because this is the process that I want in place. Doesn't do, doesn't do me any good to encourage open discussion, and the first time I hear, you know, a point that they don't agree with me, that I don't like it, and then I go off, you know, and do my own thing. So, we are where we are today on this issue because we've had some very, very valid concerns expressed by the Board and also from the public and from the public to their Commissioners. So, because there was the implicit understanding last fall, when we passed the new guidelines, or it might have been inferred, maybe implicit's too hard a verb, that if we approve, that once we approved the new guidelines, then there was the expectation that the funding on these programs would be forthcoming in the future. I don't, I don't, I don't hear that now. I don't hear that now. I don't, I just sense there's a weakening of support for this long-established program for many good reasons, you know? We live in a time, as we always have, of things change, people change, and thinkings change. So, what I would like to do is propose that even though I put this in my budget for 2019, I still am advocating that we fund this, but I doubt very seriously, having listened to all the great comments here, that this is something that would be supported in the future by the Board. So, whatever else the Board does tonight, I just want the, you know, the message to go out that this will not show up in my proposal for next year's budget. Okay? So, if you want to pin something on it, but I just, I'm here on television, but I think that this is, from what I'm hearing, this is perhaps, for me, a compromise that we fund this program for this year. Most of them, I believe that there was, do we have those charts still that we can put up there? I just want to have an education, just like 30 seconds, if you'd bear me for just 30 seconds more. I just want to show you what the product was that the Collaborative gave us, that they validated, that their process validated that these are programs that are in fact providing support throughout the district, all right? And then almost all of them, up to two weeks ago, almost all of them were in some way formally or informally connected to the Board, to projects within the county government. And then through further investigation, we found out that in fact, every one of these programs that was approved by the Collaborative has in some measure a formal or informal partnership with what the county is doing. So, the reason I asked for these two charts was to at least give the taxpayer some assurance that this isn't, this isn't something where we're simply giving money out. This has been a long, thorough process. My hat's off to Karen Carter and now Irene Barton, who's the new head of Collaborative. They did a superb job in responding to our request from last year. And my hat's off to all of them and all that they have done over the years. So, with that, that's where I'm coming from, and if anybody would like to comment on that, I'm certainly open to that, to further discussion. If not, I'll go ahead and call the question. Commissioner Cupid?
The consideration of funds under the Cobb Collaborative has been something that's been discussed for many years since I've been here, and it began for me when there was an audit done by our internal audit division about this process, as there has continued to been questions just about different policies considered or different strategies that were used, and just questioning if we were doing things in a way that comport it with best practices. I think we left that discussion with some back and forth communication with the Collaborative, and some of the requests or suggestions of internal audit were met. There were some open-ended things that were not met. However, I think over time, I've seen this become somewhat of a political football for us to address, and I can just share openly, and as I've shared at the last meeting, a significant part of my challenge has been not seeing funds go towards all organizations that are located across the county and continuing to see funding go to the same organizations and not seeing others who also serve in the same policy areas rise to the occasion to be able to serve the same target populations. Since I've shared that point at the last commission meeting, I've received a lot of correspondence from different nonprofit organizations, which I do appreciate, a number of them which have shown how they do have clients that are located across the county, inclusive of District Four. And while I'm very pleased to advocate on behalf of District Four, as being a District Four Commissioner, I've shared with Ms. Irene Barton, who I see here tonight, that it's not just a District Four matter, but it's about looking at where disparity is from a census tract perspective and seeing are we aligning services in those census tract areas, and are we partnering with organizations who are directly in those census tract areas that are highlighted through, whether it be the census data, through United Way data, ARC data, that show that there are disparities in those areas. And I have not seen that, and I think that's a goal to aspire to, and I think the Chairman's more detailed look at this process over the past year has helped me to be able to better articulate how this program could move forward in a way that I would feel more supportive. It's a surprise to me tonight to hear that this program will not come forward in the Chairman's budget proposal next year because that limits, that limits some of the things that I was looking forward to seeing about this program that would hinge upon my support tonight. My support was in seeing changes being made in a way that I think was more reflective of where certain needs are in the community. And I appreciate the communication I've had with Ms. Barton and also working with Jackie because we've had multiple communications, whether by phone or email, to try to get to something that we could live with and move forward. I felt much more confident about our ability to do that upon that discussion and was going to share certain conditions that I would approve this agenda item for, for next year. So, this is a potential path forward that I could see, not just for this year, but for next year. And it is the Chairman's responsibility to propose a budget to the county. However, it takes three out of five Commissioners to move that budget forward, and the Collaborative would have to be dependent upon three out of five Commissioners to move it forward next year, understanding that's something that he's not going to propose, that fate would be left in the hand of other Commissioners on the Board. I'm still going to move forward in faith from the conversation that I have with Irene and support this agenda item tonight and still put the conditions forward that would, that my support next year would be based on, and I'll read that, and I would just ask if the Clerk can put this in the record. Because it's at length, I'll just provide it to you, and that's Lisa Cupid's comments. My conditions are not anything to bind the Board. I just want it to be very plain about what my, what my, excuse me, support would be contingent upon next year. And it would be my desire that this program could continue to support the nonprofit work in the county. I think that we all know that the organizations do great work, and our support, and I think the lack of support for this agenda item tonight is not necessarily reflective of a us not supporting the work, I think it's just the method and the how. But for me, I'm going to read my, my conditions for next year, that I shared and modified through communication with both our deputy county manager and Ms. Irene Barton. My request for next year is that there be one documentation that demonstrates how grantees are serving Cobb residents, as identified by zip codes and commission districts. Two, documentation demonstrates how programs are provided, and grantees are served in census tracts identified as disproportionate in unemployment, low to moderate income level, lower educational attainment, rental housing, poor health outcomes, poor environmental quality, and homelessness compared to Cobb County median and average statistics. To the extent possible, I request that this data correlate with the U.S. Census map, United Way child well-being index maps, and other socioeconomic and quality of life data tracking Number three, I would ask that the collaborative host complimentary by any grant process and application training for all nonprofit organizations, with training that focuses on nonprofits who are new to the Cobb County nonprofit grant process, and that have annual income lower than the average of annual income of organizations that have received grant funds in the year prior. A copy of any required training should be provided online, free of charge, and applicants that attend training or that view training materials should be considered favorably. Would also ask for the collaborative to host workshops and classes on administrative and organizational development for nonprofits, within their respective communities, who meet basic human needs within their community, and that have not been funded through the Cobb County nonprofit grant process. And again, that focus on those with average income values less than the awardees the year prior. Space for such training shall be arranged by the county at no cost to the collaborative. Number five, would ask that organizations that do receive funding partner with or show good faith efforts to partner with or mentor nonprofits smaller or new nonprofit organizations, with emphasis on locations, where smaller nonprofit organizations are located within census tract areas, as described in point number two. Number six, would ask that the collaborative meet quarterly with the deputy county manager, and any commissioners, if desired, to provide reports or updates on service delivery, including the aforementioned requirements. Include the deputy county manager on communication to the grant process committee. Number seven, provide an annual status report on grant funding and these initiatives to the Board of Commissioners, which I believe is already done. And considerations should be made to include output and outcome data of individuals served with collaborative funding. Finally, any incomplete application that is received prior to this deadline should be given seven days to cure any defect prior to formal review. Considerations should be made for an online and paper application process, and an online process should be established to reduce likelihood of incomplete applications. Those are my conditions, and I'll forward that to the clerk.
Okay. Just one small caveat. Obviously, with the new budget process, all the commissioners are involved. If I heard all four commissioners come back next year and say they support something like this, obviously I'm going to respond to the will of the board. So I'm not trying to shut the door entirely. So if I, if I get that impression, I apologize. But I, I try to make this process as open as possible, and your comments triggered something about the process itself, so. I'm certainly open to hearing from the board about this issue in the coming year.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do want to make one point of clarification. I do recognize that there's some organizations that have work that are specific to an area where there's a high level of need. My support is not based on that organization having to reach beyond that base, if they're focusing in an area that, again, comports with the disparities that were stated. My desire is not to just create such a small, narrow window of service providers, but again, just to really target areas of need and organizations that are in those areas. That is my main focus. So organizations like Marietta Yells, I don't know if you're here tonight, I recognize the work that you do within a census tract or community, that's a very high-need area. I'm, I'm not as unreasonable to require Marietta Yells be in every census tract where there's that need. Again, I'm just looking for, for there to be just broad and overall work in other, in other areas and with other organizations within those communities. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Yes, there, there are a lot of organizations here that are on the list, and that are not present, but, and on the list. And you, you really do an immeasurable amount of work in the community, things that we can't do, that you, you do provide. My struggle with this is, I feel that the donations and contributions should be individual and voluntary, not the role of the government. My husband and I contribute to many of the ones here tonight, and on the list, and others, through our church and other organizations that we volunteer for, and, and work with in the community. And you do a great amount of work, and we do appreciate it. I just can't support this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any further comments? Commissioner Otte?
Well, everybody else said something like that. You know, I've stated my comments in the past, and those haven't changed, but I think that what stood out when we were listening to Commissioner Burrow read the proclamation for the Lions, that to me was a perfect example of what I believe is the way that it's supposed to happen. I mean, all, all the groups, all the folks that are out there representing the various different nonprofits, I've said it before, you do a tremendous job for the community. I just don't, I agree with Commissioner Burrow, I just don't agree that it's the government's role, and I think the Lions were a perfect example of that, it can be done outside of the government.
Okay. Commissioner Burrow? Sure.
Also, I don't want to just say, you know, no, but there are other ways that we can assist with fundraising, and things that we've offered to do to work with y'all, so I would still be open to doing things like that, in that fundraisers, and assisting with bringing back the Roundup program, and seeing if there's something like that that we could do on a voluntary basis, where residents and citizens would offer on their water bill to round up the amount and go to the collaborative. So, I'd still be open to continuing that discussion.
Okay. Any further comment? Okay, call the question. It passes three to two with Commissioner Burrow and not in opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McMorris. All right, on to Parks.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Deputy County Manager. One of the 2016 SLOSH projects was for a department master plan, a comprehensive master plan to be prepared for the, for the Parks Department. The board approved Loson Associates out of Nashville, Tennessee, to do this project about a year ago, and the process has ran its course, and we have a completed document. It addressed all facets of our operation, from programming, to staffing, to funding, and it was presented to you on June 25th. Therefore, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to accept the countywide master plan as, as we presented it, keeping in mind that all master plan recommendations with financial impacts to the county, or to county residents, will be brought back before the board before implementation.
Hey, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thanks, sir. May we approve the motion as presented?
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll make some comments. How's that?
Well, it's not your turn.
Do you want me to take back my second?
No. You have the floor.
Second for discussion.
Since I was the one that raised the big stink, I, it, I know it seems like just one word, but there's a big difference between adopt and accept. And my, part of my concerns were that adopting the plan could be used in the future to suggest to future boards, or the citizens at the board had approved everything that was in there. So adding, you know, changing the word to accept, and also putting in there and reminding everyone that anything that is proposed in that plan cannot move forward without coming back to the board, and with saying how the operations and maintenance is going to be covered, where the money's going to come from, because, you know, Cynthia talked earlier about all these parks she wants to build. There's parks in District Two that aren't open yet because we don't have the money. So, I appreciate the changes, and I think that the time was well spent during the two weeks.
Commissioner Burrow.
I agree, that were some of my concerns as well, and I think this is a better way to, to get to where we need to be.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Sure. Well, I approve the plan and accept it as well. And I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure of the difference, nor does it matter, because everything has to come back to the board anyway, I think there's much to do about nothing. But what I would like to suggest, and I'd like to bring back the other one that we tabled, because I think all the parks that we have purchased, we need to have plans in place, when enough funding becomes available, and we have those plans on the shelf, so we know where we're going in that direction. And then if there are friends of, that begun, I know one of mine is Price Park, they're already some friends, they would know the direction in which to go. So I think it's very appropriate for this board to approve a plan for all the millions of dollars of parkland that we have purchased, so we'll know what direction we should go in the future. So, you and I need to discuss it, we need to bring that back forward to the board.
Yes. Commissioner, Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, just a thought popped into mind. When we do our, our future land use plan, our comprehensive plan, we have periodic updates prior to the renewal of that plan, because conditions may change over time. Does this master plan, or do your master plans provide opportunity to provide updates based off of things that may arise over the time, of having that plan and implementing the plan?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're brought into the, to that process by community development. They also receive a copy of this plan.
Okay, great.
To be incorporated, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's incorporated in the comprehensive plan? Excellent. Thank you.
And I'm sorry that, you know, most people don't stay for these meetings. Those who are at home, I appreciate you hanging on, but, you know, this is an example of how the board works. You know, I really believe that, you know, years ago, James Madison talked about putting things in a sauce or letting things cool off. Well, we have a lot of discussion, you know, and eventually, by this extensive discussion, we have, we arrive at the right solution. And I think tonight is what we arrived at, we arrived at a solution, it's called a compromise.
Sorry.
It's not barking.
Yeah, really.
It's, it's, it's a compromise, but I think it's an overall, it makes a better plan, because we're all engaged in it. And, and addressing Commissioner Weatherford, he knows darn well and good that we're going to bring back his point for discussion, because the discussion, his point has merit. And just about, you know, if not everything we do here, you know, has merit, and, but it takes, some takes longer than others to iron out something where we can finally move forward on it, five to zero, three to, four to one, or three to two. So, you know, I, I really appreciate the board on this one. I was just very pleased to see how the board worked together to come up with a word, again, Commissioner Otte, it's not, sometimes the word is important. It is, all right? The famous, you know, if ever, anyone understands how the definite expression, one iota, and the implication that has, you know, in the spiritual world, words do matter. And I think tonight, we've reached, we reached a compromise here, where everybody gets to do something here, and we're not only going to have a master plan that we can move forward on, but we're also going to be able to take what we did tonight, and work on Commissioner Weather's concern, and Commissioner Cupid also supports that, so let's, let's find a way, and Cynthia, I think she's still out there, let's find a way to, to use all the magnificent jewels we have in the county, and use them appropriately, but in a way that reflects that we hear the voice of the people, but we as the board, you know, are the ones elected to make the hard calls and to move forward on this. So I appreciate the board working together on this one, and I know you're happy about it too, Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
So, so thank you for all your work and your staff.
Thank you.
And also thank the consultant.
Yes, sir.
So we need to vote on, I'm sorry, call the question. Now it's final. All right, D O T.
Yes, sir, good afternoon. We have seven items this afternoon, and the first item, we would like to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with V and H Construction Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $514,236 for Erwin Road sidewalks.
Hey, Commissioner Otte.
Commissioner Weatherford.
It's the other, Bob. I'm sorry.
Motion to approve is presented.
Millie says, Millie says Commissioner Otte. So it must be true.
That's what you get for looking at that instead of the agenda.
We have a second. Call the question. Passes five to zero. Millie's never wrong.
Thank you, sir.
That's not a mistake.
The next item we'd like to present to the Board of Commissioners is to request that the Board of Commissioners amend a previously approved intergovernmental agreement with the city of Roswell for engineering, design, and construction of a replacement bridge on Willio Road over Willio Creek.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Nice try.
Commissioner Otte.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes, passes five to zero.
We had, we had an email from our Doring fans.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request the Board of Commissioners amend a previously approved action to approve change order number one final to the contract with Paulette Tucker Enterprises, D B A Tucker grading and hauling, and amend savings to the project in the amount of $7,632.25 for drainage system repairs on Madison Woods Drive.
Now, Commissioner Weatherford.
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm positive.
Motion to approve is presented.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Okay. So our, so our next item is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $136,848 for railroad coordination during construction of Paces Ferry Road sidewalk at CSX Transportation, and authorize the corresponding budget, budget transactions, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
The next item is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank, G T I M, grant agreement with the State Road and Tollway Authority, S R D, for Wendy Hill Road, Terrell Mill Road connector, for Cobb County Project X-2401, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Otte.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of necessary equipment and licenses at a cost not to exceed $89,162.80 required to implement an upgrade to the intelligent transportation or the I T S network. Advanced Transportation Management System, A T M S, Phase Six, Project Number D-5100, and authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
Commissioner Otte.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. And our last item is to request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution in support of the Georgia Department of Transportation preliminary plan for access points along future I-25 express lanes projects, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid. Discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon. And community development.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, and Johnson Cobb County Community Development, here to ask the board to approve an economic incentives commitment agreements for
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and Johnson Cobb County Community Development, here to ask the board to approve an economic incentives commitment agreements for both Tesenkrump and Bread Incorporated and Empire Distributors and Core Five. The Tesenkrump Bread, Inc., where a commitment agreement was sent to offer incentives under 2-173, which is a special economic impact section of the Cobb County Code dealing with economic development. This is in compliance with that particular code section, and thus the incentives were offered. For Empire Distributors Core Five, this was under Section 2-169 of the previous rendition of the code. Under the eligibility for incentives, they are in compliance with all of the requirements of the former code. And again, staff would recommend approval of the economic incentive agreements that the County Attorney's Office of Community Development have worked on in regard to these two projects. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'll start with Commissioner Cupid. Because, well, one's yours and one's his, so I just want to make sure you have opportunity to comment on it, that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
We've had discussion on these incentives, and I'm certainly glad to see Cobb County get new investment here. And we still had discussion to better understand development authority incentives and also Cobb County authority incentives. And it's my understanding that both of them conducted analyses to assess what the return will be to the county. And they also provide what some of the benefits are for each of the projects. For instance, for the one that's in District Four, there will be 443 jobs created in one year, 513 jobs in 10 years, and the average annual salary will be $60,000 per year. We've had some discussion, and there's some differentiation between whether or not the jobs created, if those are new jobs, meaning just jobs that are transferred from another location, or if they're new jobs available for people to apply to. So that's something I'd like to see in future years. As part of the incentive packages, we've provided building permit fees capped at $5,000, business license fees capped at $1,000 per year for three years, and sewer development fees, which will result in flexible payments of an estimated $154,133. And there's been some robust discussion about our water system package that is provided for new businesses. And I certainly support the flexibility that water has provided to allow businesses and even homeowners to pay some of their fees over time because that flexibility does make tapping into sewer much more affordable. However, I share with staff, I'd like to see us modify the Cobb County incentives so that we are not providing any SDF incentives in the future. And for there to be some type of assessment where water has the ability to assess, does this incentive provide a return to water? It's easy to, it's easier to see how providing an incentive for the Community Development Department may result in more funds to that department through annual fees, but with water, if we're providing incentives through there, how do they capture that return? So I just think it's important for us to make sure moving forward that we're assessing that. But other than that, I'm grateful to see Empire move into the area.
Great.
And look forward to the impact they're going to have.
That's an impressive development down there. Commissioner Otte, your comments?
Very similar to Commissioner Cupid's. The incentives are very similar in that building permit fees, the Tesenkrup one has two components. One is for the office building and the other is for the tower. And in both cases, the building permit fees are capped at $5,000, same as Empire Distributors. And then the water system package is a little bit different in that it talks about reductions for the line fees, meter fees, and backflow prevention costs. It brings in 125 jobs in the first year and a total of 863 jobs over the 10-year period. And Dana, I believe that, you want to talk about when the county would recover the cost of the incentives?
Yes, sir. For both of the two incentives, basically for the TK incentive, one year after the incentive period ends is when the county would be, have made up all of the investment and then some, so that way the investment is a full realization in county and school board, in county and school board revenue. And then for the Empire Core Five, it is actually two years after the incentive period ends where the county and the school board would receive full revenue or making up the revenue that was lost through the incentives that were offered.
Right. So in both cases, the incentives are kind of kickstarting, getting things started, but then in year 11 for TK and year 12 for Empire Distributors, the county will be kind of recovering those incentives.
That is correct, sir.
So. Burrow, yes?
We had some of this discussion yesterday at work session, but you weren't available. But I agree with Commissioner Cupid on the SDF fees, but also I'd like to add, while we're revisiting the policy that we look at, consideration given if they've also received tax abatement from the development authority, that we can, we consider that with these incentives that we give as well, to consider, you know, the total amount. So these, both of these programs definitely are eligible and qualify for this tonight, and I totally support this, but I just, in the future, I'd like to be, have that be a consideration as well.
Okay. And as I mentioned yesterday, we'll discuss this during the work session overall about the criteria that I would be able to be comfortable signing a letter in support of development authority decision. We can incorporate her concerns and Commissioner Weatherford's, and the rest of the board members also part of that discussion. So again, it'll produce a better product that tie up some loose ends, and for some reason, we haven't talked about this, but we'll talk about it now. So with that, I'll leave the floor to Commissioner Burrow to make the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the economic incentive commitment agreement for Tesenkrup, Bread, and Empire Distributors Core Five.
We have a second.
And authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents? Thank you, ma'am.
You second it. You second it, right, Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No more public comments, Ms. Dance, all right? So with that, I believe the only announcements I have to make tonight, we have to make tonight, are the announcement of, announced the appointment of Jennifer Debusk, Daniel Cummings, and Jimmy Yarwood to the Workforce Development Board. And with that, we'll go to commissioners' comments, starting with Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First one I have is that save the date, October 15th, I will have my next town hall meeting at 7 o'clock at the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center. You'll see more information about that in the newsletter. Is Sharon still here? Come on down. Want to congra, offer congratulations, and you're going to see some pictures up here on the screen, to our own GIS team. They were only one of two governments other than, other than a state agency to win one of the 2018 Georgia Technology Innovation Showcase Awards.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to tell everybody what we got for?
I will. This one is kind of, I'm really excited about this one because it was not just GIS and IS that was involved, but it was a collaborative effort with us and several other organizations. The, what we received it for is increasing citizen, or government to citizen engagement with the use of, by the use of story maps and we, some other things, we turned those in for, especially where EOC, what we did with the hurricanes when we did the special page, the elections page we did for the early voting to the short and the amount of times, those kind of things, but applications like that, so it was a collaborative effort with other departments.
And folks can find all these storyboards on GIS.
On the GIS page.
That's right.
So, yes, sir.
So congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you, sir.
Also, on October 11th, there'll be the annual celebration, I don't know how many years it is now, Joanne probably knows, East Cobb Public Safety Celebration for, by the East Cobb Business Association, and that's on October 11th at 6:00 PM at Old Town. And finally, I want to do a shout out to Major Little, Precinct Commander for Precinct Three, and Officer Stoney from Precinct Three, the Community Affairs Officer. Kim and I spent this afternoon at a fabulous active shooter presentation that they did for the employees at the battery. Very educational. Recommend, if you haven't seen it, to go, this is not the, the one that, you know, the Hyde, whatever those three things are. Now they got them all confused because now they taught us all this other stuff, but created by our own Cobb County folks, and it was, it was a great presentation. That's all I have.
Commissioner Burrow.
Well, tomorrow, we're having snowballs with your cop at Pelican Snowcones on Canton Road, 3600 Canton Road, from 3:00 to 5:00. Precinct Four, Community Engagement, Officer Natalie Jek will be there, and probably some other folks will join us. No. I don't know, they might. Also, this week, for all you travelers out there, you're going to want to avoid Sandy Plains Road from Ken Jack to Ebenezer. The median, raised median on that segment is under construction, and it's down to one lane, and you are not going to want to go through there. It was backed up at 6:30 when I came here, still. So find an alternate route, Piedmont or somewhere, but you're going to want to avoid Sandy Plains from Ken Jack to Ebenezer. The good news is, it's this week only, which is also fall break, so there's less school traffic. But it's scheduled to be finished Sunday, the 30th. The fair is going on, the North Georgia State Fair. Go out and take, get on some rides and eat some food and spend a lot of money. It's open through Sunday, and there's a schedule online, northgeorgestatefair.com. Also, October 6th, at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church, they're celebrating Oktoberfest from 10:00 in the morning to, I believe, 4:00 PM, and that's located at 2922 Sandy Plains Road, but the, the lane closure will be over by that, by then. You can find out more about that at htlcm.org. The deadline to register to vote for the November 6th general election is October 9th. You can go to cobelections.org or mvp.sos.ga.gov to register. And last but not least, happy birthday to Major Andy Height, our Precinct One Commander. Today's his birthday. Happy birthday.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Have a couple announcements, and I'm not sure which one we're putting up first. All right. Governor's Office of Highway Safety hosted the annual Governor's Challenge Awards banquet to recognize statewide law enforcement agencies in seven different categories, based on various categories, including size. The award program was designed to highlight outstanding achievements in highway safety enforcement and education. They're recognized for their approach and effectiveness of their overall safety program. Congratulations Cobb County Police Department for first place in overall traffic enforcement efforts and motorcycle safety in category seven. And the only thing I wasn't certain of with the two plaques, did we get the car? Did we, did we, well, why are you standing in front of it? Okay. Well, that's, it's a great job by our fine law enforcement, but next time, let's try to win the car as well. Great job. And Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, we're having a community open house for the new fire station 18 on Marcell Road in Brookstone Community. Everyone stop by, it's a beautiful place, replacing a 1970 era fire station that's been there forever, so it'll be an open house with a ribbon cutting at 11 o'clock, and it'll be open to the public from 10:00 to 2:00, so everyone stop by. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, a couple of announcements. The last day to register for Cobb 101 Academy to learn about local government is coming up soon on September 28th. The 10-week course helps provide an in-depth look to the different aspects of county government. If you go to our newsletter online, you can apply online, and for more information, you can also visit cobbcounty.org backslash Cobb 101. Something I realized I did not include in my newsletter, but I'd like to apprise the public about, is that October is Anti-Bullying Month, and my office will be helping to recognize that by working in concert with Kaiser Permanente, which is going to help fund awardees, and also telecom professionals for social responsibility. For elementary schoolers, we have a drawing contest, and for middle school winners, we'll have a first and second, third place award for those that provide essays, that answer about, you can pick one out of 10 topics. Information was sent out to each of our schools here in Cobb County, but I'll also include some information in my newsletter because certainly there are some persons who are educated beyond the schools that we've sent information to. The deadline is October 10th to turn in submissions, and we'll recognize them at our Board of Commissioners meeting on October 23rd. We'll have a reception that precedes it here at 100 Cherokee Street, and then we'll recognize our top winners that evening during our presentations. If you have any questions about that contest or anything else that I shared tonight, please feel free to email me at lisa.cupid@cobbcounty.org. Thank you.
And I'm just frankly shocked, you know, as many of you may or may not know, Commissioner Otte at one time was a fighter bomber pilot, and they are not known for humility. But, but Commissioner Otte has been invited to the White House on Friday, and I'd like you to tell, tell us about that, Commissioner Otte.
Not yet. I might be by the time I get there. It is a conference on the challenges of opioid addiction, and I received the invitation on Sunday. It's a three-hour, well, three and a half hour conference Friday morning, so I'll be heading up Thursday night and go into the conference.
All right, well, congratulations on your selection.
Thank you.
You represent the county well. And with that, we're adjourned.